Good evening and welcome to special town meeting, an annual town meeting of June 14th at Town of East Bridgewater. Procedurally, I'm going to read the non-resident attendees for both meetings. Michelle Dahl, Jim Purcell, Rebecca Johnson, Lee Nguyen, John Clifford, Chris Kenny, Paula Wolf, Melissa Morrissey, Phyllis Terrell, Ryan McGonigal, Elizabeth Legault, Kate Byrne, Andrew Gentile, William Clements, John Phelan, Senator Walter Timmeltie, Representative Allison Sullivan, Representative Michelle Dubois, Congressman Stephen Lynch, Shayna Barnes Monroe, his assistant, Christopher McGee, Jason Trippenya. At this time, I would like you to rise and we can pledge allegiance to the flag is to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It being approximately 7:10, I'm going to have Town Clerk Stugelpatrick read the warrant for the special town meeting.
To any of the constables of East Bridgewater in said county of Plymouth Commonwealth, Massachusetts, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of East Bridgewater, who being qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet at the junior senior high school, 143 Plymouth Street in said East Bridgewater on Monday, the 14th day of June 2021 at 7:00 PM, then and there to act upon the enclosed articles to wit. You are directed to serve this warrant by posting a copy thereof attested by you in writing in each of the six public places in the town at least 14 days before the time of holding the meeting called for in the warrant. Therefore, fail not and make do return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk of said town honor before the 28th day of May 2021, given under our hands this 25th day of May in the year of our Lord 2021, the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Sue. Before we get down to article one of the special town meeting, I'm going to ask Congressman Lynch to please join me up here for a few words. Thank you Congressman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Great to be with you. My name is Steve Lynch. I have the great honor of representing the Town of East Bridgewater in the United States Congress. I thought I might just give a brief summary of recent events in Washington DC, especially those impacting most directly the Town of East Bridgewater. As you may remember, last March, we had the CARES Act, which was a plan offered by Congress to provide direct relief to cities and towns and states, tribal governments and counties in order to address the health impacts of the pandemic. Pursuant to that act, the Town of Bridgewater, East Bridgewater received about $980,000 directly, but for the specific purpose of dealing with the health impacts. So, funding was available for first responders, fire and police who did a magnificent job, but also to facilitate the testing, tracking and tracing of pandemic cases, COVID-19 cases within the town. More recently, Congress passed the American Rescue Plan Act. And unlike the CARES Act, the American Rescue Plan Act provided 1.4 million, approximately 1.4 million dollars to the Town of East Bridgewater, but was really discretionary, fully discretionary to the Board of Selectmen, to town meeting and to your local officials in order that we might, well, let's put it this way, we're dealing with 50 states and thousands of communities across cities and towns and counties across America. And all those cities, towns and counties were in different states of disrepair, if you will, because of the pandemic. So, we thought instead of trying to fix one size fits all rules for that money, we thought it would be in the best interest of the local communities that town government be able to steer those fund, that funding to the areas where they needed the most help. There were broad funding mandates within that bill for opening up schools, and I see the superintendent here, and also for making sure that there was PPP loans for small businesses. We passed $15.6 billion for a restaurant revitalization plan, which we lost over 250,000 small businesses in the United States during this pandemic. But now with the restrictions coming off, a lot of those businesses are being revived and restarted. So, I just want to say it's a great honor for me to represent you. We have a great team here in terms of the elected officials here in East Bridgewater. I know that Representative Michelle Dubois is here, one of your state representatives, and I'm sure that she appreciates the great honor of serving you as well up at the State House. So, with that, I just want to thank you for being involved in town meeting. This is really where it all begins. The other piece of legislation that is pending right now is the Transportation and Infrastructure Bill. You probably, if you follow that type of thing, we're having a debate actively in Congress right now. We just passed the draft bill in the House on Thursday night, actually 5:00 in the morning on Thursday morning. And so what we've done is tried to get priority projects recommended by cities and towns all across America to determine what those priorities for each individual city and town and community are. So, we've been communicating with your town manager and also, you know, Mr. Purcell, and trying to determine which are the priority projects for East Bridgewater and also neighboring towns, because some of these projects touch on several different municipalities, several different towns. So, we're in the process of doing that right now and eager to find out which projects would be a top priority for East Bridgewater. But that process continues. Again, it's an honor for me to represent you in the United States Congress. God bless you for attending town meeting. God bless East Bridgewater and may God continue to bless these United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you Congressman for attending. We appreciate the news of what's going on down there. Now, we can do our business here. Article one, we're passing over in the special town meeting. Article two, Mr. Haynes from the Department of Public Works.
I move that the town move transfer of the three thousand, almost $218,437.62 to the FY 2021 snow and ice budget to cover a deficit created by the winter snow removal.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion made second. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends the article.
Mr. Haynes for discussion if any.
Simply in the past, the deficit, the snow and ice deficit has typically been carried forward into the next fiscal year. We're trying to be, for the sake of more transparency, and address the current deficit in the current fiscal year, which then allows for a cleaner free cash availability going into FY 22.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article two as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article two as presented, say aye. Opposed? Article two passes. Article three, Chief Hare from the Fire Department.
Mr. Moderator, I think we were going to pass over this article.
I apologize, I didn't know. We're passing over Article three. Thank you, Chief. Article four, Chief O'Brien from the Police Department.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Article three of the annual town meeting held on June 23rd, 2020, account number 1-210-3968-5596, tasers, by amending the purpose of the article from the purchase of tasers to other specialized equipment needed by the Police Department.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends the article.
Chief for discussion if any.
Yeah, firearms have reached about 15 years old. They are no longer supported by the manufacturer, so we are in the process of purchasing new firearms.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article four as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article four as presented, say aye. Opposed? Article four passing unanimously.
Thank you.
Article five passing over, and since these are passed over, we don't need to do any procedural work on it. Article six, Arts Council. David Sheedy from Board of Selectmen.
Article six to see if the town will reason appropriate or transfer from available funds or otherwise provide a sum of money to account 1, 910-520-5965, transfer to Special Revenue Fund, the sum of $5,537.88, to account number 21693102204971, EBAC, for the purpose of repaying money spent from the state grant account in error during fiscal year 2020 or take any other action thereon or relation thereto.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion made seconded. Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends the article.
Mr. Sheedy for discussion if any.
This is just money that we had spent in our fiscal year, we're just trying to move it into the correct account.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article six as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article six as presented, say aye. Opposed? Article six passing unanimously. Article seven, Mr. Spigall, Board of Selectmen.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from account number 1-0-359-3590, free cash, the sum of $50,000, to the account number 1-426-3984-5790, redevelopment study, the purpose of the redevelopment study by Weston Sampson, or to take other action thereon or in relation thereto.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion made seconded. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends the article.
Mr. Spigall, discussion if any.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, this is phase two. Last June, we appropriated money for Weston Sampson to a feasibility study. I can say we were very successful in that, to the point where the City of Brockton has signed a letter of intent with the Town of East Bridgewater to allow storage in the district of Whitman Street, down Route 18 to Highland Street, about 300 acres. We will continue to pursue this redevelopment of that area with Weston Sampson. This money will be used to continue the work that needs to be done.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article seven as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article seven as presented, say aye. Opposed? Article seven passing unanimously. Article eight is passed over, so I can entertain a motion to adjourn the special town meeting. Motion made seconded. All in favor? That ends the special town meeting. I'm going to have Mr. Gilpatrick read the warrant for the annual town meeting.
To any and all of the constables of the Town of East Bridgewater in said county of Plymouth Commonwealth of Massachusetts, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of East Bridgewater, who being qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet at the junior senior high school, 143 Plymouth Street in said East Bridgewater on Monday, the 14th day of June 2021 at 7:00 PM, then and there to act upon the articles, the enclosed articles to wit. You are directed to serve this warrant by posting copy thereof attested to by you in writing in each of six public places in the town at least seven days prior before the time for holding the meeting called in the warrant. Herefore, fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk of said town honor before the 28th day of May 2021, given under our hands this 25th day of May in the year of the Lord 2021, the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Gilpatrick. So, this year and last year, we used what they call consent agenda. It was allowed a number of years ago to basically expedite procedural or technical articles that we vote every year. This year, the consent agenda includes Article 1, 4, 5, 7, 8. I will certainly, and if you want to take a quick look, you can, I will certainly entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. What that will do, will accept those articles without any further discussion. Those are the ones like entering the contract with the state, setting up the annual revolving funds. So, I will certainly entertain a motion to take those out of order, 1, 4, 5, 7, 8, and pass them as a consent agenda. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion, Mr.?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or is any one particular article anybody would like to discuss in those groups? I'll give you a few seconds to look at them. These are the same ones we did last year. Anybody have any questions on any particular articles? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the articles in the consent agenda, say aye. Opposed? Passing unanimously. So, we start now with Article two. I think I got my right list here. Which is the budget, and it's going to be, Dan Pika from the Finance Committee.
Thank you. I move that the town fix the salaries of all elected officials for the fiscal year 2022 and appropriate funds for the payment of said salaries and compensation, including the approval and funding of the town's obligations under the collective bargaining agreements completed in the fiscal and calendar year, the payment of debt and interest, provide for a reserve fund and for charges, expenses and outlays of the several town departments for the ensuing 12-month period through June 30th, 2022. All is set forth in the budget presented by the Finance Committee and as funding therefore to appropriate from taxation, the sum of $32,703,703, transfer the sum of $12,339,778, from projected state aid receipts, the sum of $2,906,48 from estimated local receipts, and to transfer from ambulance reserved receipts account, the sum of $715,000, and further the sum of $1,181,465 from other sources, $2,294,619 from Water Enterprise estimated receipts, and $500,000 from Water Enterprise retained earnings, $898,048 from Solid Waste Enterprise Fund estimated receipts, and $100,000 from Solid Waste Enterprise Fund retained earnings, all to fund the budget as recommended by the Finance Committee as shown in the final column of Article two and the warrant for the June 14th, 2021 annual town meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion second. I hope we have a Finance Committee recommendation, do you have the committees?
We recommend the article.
For any further discussion, Mr. Pika?
None.
Any further discussion on Article two as presented? Mr. Whitefella?
Is that the total budget?
That's the total budget, correct.
Jim Whitefella, Leo Way. I've got a question, and I'm not opposing, I'm just asking questions. On the budget, under total electricity, line 195, when they put the solar panel farm up on Highland Avenue, Highland Street, we were sold the bill of goods that that was going to reduce our funds for electricity, $50,000 or better dollars a year. And I'm not saying that it hasn't, I'm just wondering where it shows in this line someplace. It looks like it's gone up 77,500 over last year.
Do you want to defer that, Mr. Pika?
Yes. I've got three or four more, Bob, if you want to take a?
Oh, you want to do them all at once?
You want to do them all?
Go ahead.
Building inspection has gone up 79,950.
Jim, what line item is that?
Oh, I'm sorry, 241. Has gone up $79,000 over FY 2020, and it's gone up 13,156 over this year, or last, oh, this year. And then, line 302, I know there's not a lot we can probably do about this, but it's Line 302, the social evoke is up 830,000. I know they're putting a big addition out over there, but are we funding the whole And then, line 610, the library, I bet you never thought me even question this one, is up 31,153. I'm sure that there's a reason for this. These are just the ones that are really outstanding over the rest of the budget, which everyone seems to have committed a reasonable figure, but these are way out of line with the rest of it.
Let's see how we can address those. The 195, would that be on the building facilities or building maintenance?
195, the electricity?
Yeah.
Is it John?
Uh, oh.
Hi, Phyllis Terrell, Town Accountant. The net metering credits means that we still have to pay 100% of our electric bills. The credits we get are, we pay 80% to the field owners, we get 20%, which have to come back in as a fee type thing, and it's in your local receipts for next year. That's how the, when net metering credits first started, that's the way the Department of Revenue made you do it. So, we pay 100% of our bills this year, we pay ourselves the $50,000 which comes in through your local receipts. It's kind of convoluted, but that's what they made us do.
Thank you, Phyllis Terrell. The building inspection issue, I don't see building facilities manager here. The building inspector is not here, Mr. Whitefella, that would be his submission. I apologize, but he's not present tonight. The other one we had was the regional high school assessment. Superintendent Legault?
It's Southeastern, and we don't offer that programming. I think it's up 100,000, 110,000 from where it was last year. So, we do have more students going to the programming. We do not offer that here. We are working out in consortium with other districts right now to offer some of that programming here and sending our students to other local high schools for some of the programs to bring them back. So, we don't have that additional. If Southeastern offers construction, we don't have that here. If they offer food services, automotive, we don't have that here. Cosmetology, we don't, we don't, we don't have those programs. Because it is a local, it's opportunity and access, so the kids have the opportunity and access to go.
Could you make sure you're speaking to the mic? Thank you.
I don't have a problem with the kids going, and I think it's a great opportunity, and I think more kids should be going. However, we sitting, we built this place a few years ago now. Down back, we've got sitting a metal shop, a woodworking shop, and I don't know what the, I forget what the third one is. And we're sending kids someplace else to the tune of $106,000 increase a year? Something's wrong, folks.
Do you want to address it, Superintendent Legault?
Some of the programs we can't offer because we have a vocational agreement with the state, and vocational ed offers programming, and we do not, we cannot offer some of those programs because they, we are in a consortium with the state and with vocational ed. However, you are right, we do have metal, we do have a woodworking shop. They are expensive to run, it is an increase, it's probably, it's probably less expensive for us to send the students out to Southeastern to get these programings, to get their certificates in these areas. That's why vocational ed is popular, and that's why it is common, and that's why it is, it accommodates and offers opportunity and access for our students, and it accommodates a public school to continue with the, with the regular or general ed population and, or not population, the coursework. The Vokes have a specialty that we don't have, and they, and now they're, we're competing against the Vokes sometimes when it comes to, because now they're offering AP courses, they're offering mathematics and English and social studies, and you can go and get your four-year high school diploma from a regional. We are looking at that, and like I said, we have joined a consortium with other local high school or other local districts, and we'll be talking about that probably at the next meeting or the first meeting in August. So, we, believe me, I don't want to see a million dollars go to the Voke, and I certainly understand. However, we do not have that programming here, and we do have an agreement with the vocational schools.
One more, yeah, one more, Jim. Then I want to move on to the library, so we can get that addressed.
I think now I'm really upset. We built this place 10 years ago, was it, David? And we knew at the time, if I'm not mistaken, that we couldn't offer woodworking, we couldn't offer automotive, and we still put the shops downstairs. Who was thinking? Do you see my problem? That has to be a million dollars sitting down there that we can't use.
I want to move on to the next, I think Christopher McGee, is he, he's here?
He is.
Could you come up and see if you can address the concern with the library?
Yes, so the bulk of the increase that you see in the total personnel services for the library, about half of it is a change in one of the staff positions that was a paraprofessional position, and we moved it a couple of years ago to a professional position. We upgraded that, that's the YA librarian position. And then also my own salary during contract negotiations was raised, and then the remainder of it is just the 2% COLA plus step increases, and also some changes in longevity, because several of our staff members are long-term, and as they reach a new level of longevity, it goes up a good bit.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Any further discussion on Article two as presented? Wolf.
Pronounced Wolf.
I said Wolf.
Oh, I thought you said woof.
Man, already, it's early.
Hi, Kathy Wolf, 272 Laurel Street. I just have, I have a follow-up question on the metal shop and the woodworking. Are those not used at all? Is that what I'm trying to, what you're saying, that even when I was in school a million years ago, we were allowed to have home ec, and the guys went to shop, and it was an hour every week, but at least we were able to use the facilities? And we're not using them at all?
The, the, we just know the programming is not as intense.
Right.
As it would be at Southeastern. Our students do have those opportunities to go to woodworking. We have manufacturing one, manufacturing two, we're working on, we're opening a robotics lab, we're looking at 21st century work skills, we're looking at what companies want and need, and we're working with, we have agreements with Massa Sawyer Community College, we have agreements with Bridgewater State, we're working with a consortium to get into UMass Dartmouth. So, there are things that we're trying to do and to use those shops as well as, as well as the regular requirements, the comprehensive education of the Commonwealth. Those shops are being used, and they are full. The students are using them, and they are full. We can't get, we can't get enough kids in them throughout the four years, to tell you the truth, they're, they're full. So, yes, they are being used. I'd like to offer more, but when you offer more, comes an additional, a person or people and additional into the budget. So, we are looking at those things, this is not something that we're not, we don't constantly talk about.
Okay. No, it just sounded as if we were sitting, you know, completely unused, and that's absolutely not the case. Okay. My second question was line item 151, which is Town Council, General My second question was, um, line item one fifty-one, which is, um, town council, general expenses. I know that this is something that, um, we have an agreement with a law firm, but my concern is that from the actual FY twenty amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and change to the fiscal twenty-one and fiscal twenty-two, it actually went up fifty-five thousand dollars, which is a forty-six percent increase. And I just wanted to understand why it would jump so great, so greatly.
Uh, Mr. Purcell, town manager.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Through you, um, in the, uh, in the town meeting book, you'll note the fiscal twenty column, uh, shows actual expenditures, and fiscal twenty-one shows appropriations, uh, for the current fiscal year. In the next column is the fiscal twenty-two departmental request, uh, the amounts that you'll be voting on tonight. Uh, my understanding is that the amounts requested, uh, on an annual basis have been relatively static, uh, over the years, including fiscal twenty. Um, uh, there's a, uh, a, a high probability that a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars was indeed budgeted, but only a hundred and twenty thousand dollars was spent. It was probably an off year, it was probably not a year where collective bargaining agreements and other things had to be renewed, and perhaps there were fewer land use cases than, um, uh, than, uh, than we normally see. So, I would celebrate the fiscal twenty number.
Thank you, Mr. Purcell. Any further discussion on Article Two as presented? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote, um, so seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Uh, Article Three, Mr. Pika.
I move that the town vote to transfer from general stabilization the amount of one million seventy-two thousand five hundred forty-one dollars to fund the purchases.
Uh, motion to have a second. Motion, may I second? Finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends the article.
Capital planning committee recommendation?
Capital planning recommends the article.
And when you say the purch, you're talking about the ones that, is it on the screen in front of you?
They're listed in Article Three.
Yeah, I just want to see if it's on the screen for the people. Uh, Mr. Pika for discussion, if any.
No, this just goes to fund, uh, the capital request of various departments throughout town.
All right, any further discussion on Article Three as presented? This again requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, three unanimously. Article Four, we're skipping over those in the consent agenda. Article Five within the consent agenda. Article Six, Carol Julius, Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I make a motion that the town vote to adopt the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-U.
Motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion, may I second? Finance committee have recommendation on this?
Finance committee recommends the article.
Thank you. For discussion, if any, Ms. Julius?
Uh, no, I would just go by the explanation that's printed in the warrant.
Any further discussion on Article Six as presented? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article, pass unanimously. Article Seven was in the consent agenda. Article Eight was in the consent agenda. Article Nine, Mr. Sheedy, Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I see the town will extend the effective date of Article Twenty-Six of the June twenty-third, twenty-twenty annual town meeting to amend the personnel bylaw by replacing it with the following from the effective date of July first, twenty-twenty-one to effective date of January first, twenty-twenty-two, as printed.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion, may I second? Mr. Sheedy for discussion.
It's last year at, uh, the annual town meeting, we voted to, um, basically disperse the personnel board and to put most of that, um, regulations and all the requirements and the authorization through the Board of Selectmen to the town administrator. And as we all know right now, we only have Jim Purcell as interim town administrator, so we have no one that would be able to.
How to make him feel good, James.
Fuck that pick. But he's doing a great job. And we have really no one to run this program. So, the personnel board will stay in effect until then.
All right, any further discussion on Article Nine as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Nine, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Nine, pass unanimously. Article Ten, Mr. Spagon.
Mr. Moderator, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from account number one dash zero dash three five nine dash three five nine zero, free cash, the sum of a hundred thousand, to account number one dash one nine five dash one nine eight six dash five four three five, electrical improvements and upgrades, or to take any other action thereon or thereof.
Motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion, may I second? Finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends the article.
Capital plan, did they have recommendation?
Capital planning did not.
Okay. And Mr. Spagon for discussion, if any?
Uh, quite simply, just to fund improvements to the electrical services in town buildings.
Any further discussion on Article Ten as presented? Mr. Whitefell.
I think this is the same thing we voted a hundred thousand dollars for last year. How often are we going to upgrade our electrical service?
Mr. Moderator, it's my understanding.
Wait a second, one at a time.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I apologize, sir, for talking. May I?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Um, my understanding, uh, through you, Mr. Moderator, is this is the second year of a, uh, of a four-year program. Uh, you funded it this year, uh, you're being asked to, uh, to fund it for the next, uh, fiscal year and, uh, probably two years after that. Uh, the total program cost, my understanding is, is about four hundred thousand dollars, a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars a pop over four fiscal years, is the current plan.
Mr. Moderator, I think if you look at the last year's meeting, that was not explained to the, to the body of the town. There was nothing said about this being a four-year project. We're replacing light bulbs.
Any further discussion on Article Ten as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Ten, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Ten passes, I'm sure. Article Eleven, Ms. Julius, Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Commonwealth Massachusetts Acts of nineteen ninety-eight, Chapter one ninety-four, Section four nineteen, or similar authorizing legislation, and further to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of an intermunicipal agreement for regional cooperation of solid waste and recycling services for the South Shore Recycling Cooperative for a term through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, copy of which is on file in the office of the town clerk, and further to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute and deliver said intermunicipal agreement and such other terms and conditions as may be set forth therein.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Uh, does Finance Committee have recommendation on this?
Finance Committee recommends the article.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Julius for discussion, if any?
Um, it's just to allow the DPW to join a consortium with area towns to save on costs, and if there were any follow-up questions, I would defer to John Haynes.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion on Article Eleven as presented? Mrs. Wolf, with an L.
Um, I'm just wondering what kind of cost savings, what kind of, um, changes they're going to implement, and I think I'd like to have John Haynes come up and address it.
Yes, he's going to address your questions. I'm going to have him address your questions. Mr. Haynes, for Public Works.
Uh, if the, to the moderator, if you'd allow, I'm actually going to ask Rob Ken, operations.
Yes, absolutely.
DPW to address this.
Absolutely, Mr. Ken.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's a bunch of benefits to joining this, um, group. DEP runs a program, where you apply for grants, you need certain points, the more points you get, the more money you get. Simply joining this group gets us up to a thousand dollars, and that's just one of the benefits. Uh, there's probably fifteen I could list, um, reduction in the cost of hazardous waste day, um, different recycling incentive programs, so. The program itself will probably pay for itself in a year or two, so. And if it doesn't, we have the option to, to back out.
Thank you, Mr. Ken. Uh, does that, any, anything further on Article Eleven as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Eleven, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Eleven passes, a majority. Article Twelve, Mr. Sheedy.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from account number one zero, three five nine, three five nine zero, free cash, the sum of thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars, to account number one nine one zero, three nine eight seven, five one six four, contractual obligations for retirement for the purpose of funding the town's contractual obligations for retiring employees or take any other action thereon.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Finance committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends the article.
Mr. Sheedy for discussion, if any?
This is just to bring up the, make sure we have all many to cover all our retirees.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Twelve as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Twelve as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Twelve passes, majority. It's unanimous. Uh, Article Thirteen, Chief Harren.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from account number two-two dash two-three-one dash eight-three-five dash five-nine-six-six, ambulance receipts, transfer to stabilization, the sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to account number eighty-two dash one twenty-two dash nine-one-one dash four-nine-seven-two, capital stabilization, transfer from special revenue for Tower One.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Finance committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends the article.
Chief Harren for discussion, if any?
Yeah, last year at town meeting, the town approved, uh, one point four million, four million dollars to purchase a, a new tower truck. Seven hundred thousand dollars came from that, from the M's account last year, and this is going to be paid off through the M's account over the next four years. This is payment number one of four or five.
Thank you, Chief. Any further discussion on Article Thirteen as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Thirteen as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Thirteen passes unanimously. Article Fourteen, uh, Mr. Gardner, Planning Board.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article fourteen as printed in the warrant.
I have a motion to have a second. Second. Uh, Mr. Gardner for discussion, if any?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, uh, Article fourteen is a amendment to the Town of East Bridgewater zoning bylaw that would change the requirement for outdoor dining service at restaurants from a special permit issued by a planning board to a simple site plan review, uh, done by the planning board upon application, uh, with the planning building department. Uh, the primary purpose of this is to avoid the potential catch-22 that's coming up with multiple outdoor dining facilities that were approved under the emergency orders due to the, uh, the coronavirus. When those emergency orders end in their total, I believe it's going to be this weekend, theoretically, those outdoor dining sites would no longer be, uh, permitted without a, a then subsequent filing for a special permit. Our feeling is that those, those should be done under site plan approval. I just also note that outdoor dining does not increase the capacity of the restaurant as the licensing capacity of the restaurant belongs to both the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen under their permits that are issued. So, it would only change the, the permitting process from a special permit, uh, which after the fact could be a, a serious problem since some of these exist, to a site plan approval.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Any further discussion on Article fourteen as presented?
Mr. Moderator, can we just have Mr. Gardner clarify that the planning board recommended the article?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Boy, you have a planning board recommendation?
Yeah, that's the second part. Yeah, so the, the planning board voted at their public hearing, as required under the State Zoning Act, uh, seven to nothing, unanimous to, uh, recommend approval of this, uh, bylaw change at town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. I apologize for not giving you that earlier. Uh, do I have any further discussion on Article fourteen as presented? Seeing, this requires a two-thirds vote. Seeing, seeing no further discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article fourteen passes unanimously. Article fifteen, Mr. Gardner.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I'd also like to move Article fifteen as printed in the warrant.
I have a motion to have a second. Uh, for discussion, if any, Mr. Gardner.
Yes, this is to correct an error that was actually originally generated back in nineteen eighty-seven. When, when we revised the terms in the industrial district in terms of what required a special permit, there was a sentence left in Note Ten of the general requirements in the zoning bylaw that, that stated that, that all permits or all development within the industrial district require a special permit. That conflicts with the new statements that were added in, in nineteen eighty-seven. Uh, this was actually brought up by a, a, a state board that was reviewing an application we had made for a grant that we had conflicting language in the bylaw. I'll give you our, the planning board recommendation on that, which, which followed the public hearing held as required under the, the State Zoning Act. The vote was seven in favor, none opposed, to recommend adoption of this change.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Any further discussion on Article fifteen as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article fifteen as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article fifteen passes unanimously. All right, the one we've all been waiting for. Article sixteen, Mr. Gardner.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I'll move Article sixteen as printed in the town warrant.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion, may I second? Mr. Gardner for discussion, if any?
Yes, the origination of this article came from the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen, and the intent of this article was simply to allow, as the article fairly clearly, uh, delineates in, in pretty detailed terms, indoor growing cultivation of marijuana within the Town of East Bridgewater. It only allows indoor growing, no other use, no other sales or anything else like that. Uh, the intent of this was primarily a financial intent in that we in the past had had someone interested in an extremely large building in East Bridgewater, which was available. Uh, and at the time, the race to, to do this was going on in all the budding towns, as, as we already know. Several of our budding towns, West Bridgewater and Bridgewater already have indoor grow sites, uh, which are returning substantial funds to the town. Again, the intent of this was, was almost purely financial, and I'll leave it at that. And also give you our recommendation.
Yes, please do.
The recommendation from the planning board, held after our required public hearing, was six in favor with one opposed to recommend adoption of this article at the town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Any further discussion on Article sixteen as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article sixteen as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Moderator says it passes by two-thirds. Article seventeen, Mr. Gardner.
So, Mr. Moderator, I'll move Article seventeen as printed in the warrant.
I have a motion to have a second. Uh, Mr. Gardner for discussion, if any?
Okay, this is the, the follow-up article that, that, that pairs with Article sixteen. This would create the local bylaw in the town bylaws, not a zoning bylaw, but a town bylaw is recommended by the, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to cover the legalities of having an indoor grow facility within the town. It, it follows all of the, the standard recommendations within the state law that was passed in the last, I, I believe it was originally three years ago now. So, again, this was recommended as, as a, as a follow-up pairing article so that the selectmen would have the authority and the control they needed where an applicant come before the selectmen to request a permit under the, the indoor grow facility sections of the zoning bylaw as well as the, the local town bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Do we have recommendations? Did you, do you recommend?
No, since, since this is not a zoning bylaw change, there's no recommendation. This is a, a town bylaw change.
Just need a majority. Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Any further discussion on Article seventeen as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Seventeen as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Seventeen passes unanimously, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Moderator?
Oh. Did I miss one?
No, before you adjourn.
I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Sheedy.
Thank you. Having the meeting on June fourteenth was not, it was just coincidental. But June fourteenth is the anniversary of the Town of East Bridgewater being incorporated. This is the hundred and ninety-eighth year. So, coming along in twenty twenty-three, we will be planning on a huge celebration. Everything works right, Carol will be the chair at that point. And Dale Julius, if you'll stand for a minute, just to make sure everyone knows you.
Everybody.
You know, it, that's, that's Carol's husband. But, but Dale has, uh, agreed to represent a committee so we can get started on this as soon as possible to make sure that we have everything in place when we get around to twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much.
It's also our wedding anniversary today, so. We love the town so much, we got married on June fourteenth.
The same year?
Yeah, no. He's old, but he's not that old.
Thank you for that information. Thank you for that information, David. So now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Seconded, all in favor say aye. Good night, everybody, have a safe summer.